Sounds good, because I think I might just, I might honestly just put this on there.
Yeah.
Would that be bad?
No, I don't think so. Here, should I try the link?
Yeah. Hello. It's literally my photo.
It's literally.
Five are watching. I would be interested to hear how, like, if you can hear how the sound quality is. Can you hear it? Okay, so I'm gonna, I mean, it's gonna have to be, it's kind of a thing. Hello, world. And this link they posted on the Facebook question mark?
I did, yeah.
You did, on the Sauk Rapids Rice Facebook.
Oh, not that one.
Okay, but I think Trent might have, so I'll go look. Or I think he might have. Yep. Oh, it's on there.
That chair.
Well, I think just, I don't feel like they should have a view on it, right?
Right.
What do you think?
Do you see like that? Yeah. And then maybe switch.
Is it still live? Oh, oops, on the other thing. Yes.
Yeah. There's a leg.
That's okay, I think there's gonna be a leg.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, it's like a new idea this.
Amazing, thank you. I think that's done, yeah.
Okay, yeah, keep it up.
Eight.
No, I just do my AirPods. My Apple. I was like, where's my damn?
A little piece so we can put this on.
Amazing, thank you. Rather than my chair, I mean, I just make do with what I have, you know? That's what I do. Oh my gosh.
Thank you.
Thank you, simple. Oh wow, it's just slick, can I get one of these? I don't have a forward-facing camera, that'll be fine, right?
Is this what you wanna do, just forward-facing like this, right?
I mean, yeah, I'd love to.
This just goes on there so nobody kicks it out.
My microphone, so what I have is really, really high-tech. If I do this, do you know, will this be the loudest that it can be, or like, what is the difference between these one, two, three? Cindy didn't know.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's the sensitivity of it. So, yeah, definitely, if somebody says something, it's feedback or something like that, then I would turn it off.
Okay.
We'll leave it in the middle, and see.
There. Amazing, thank you, I have another one, I have like a lapel I could use. But, I'm just gonna hook up.
Alright.
Thank you so much for your support, I wanna. Oh yeah, great, look at that. It's slick. Thanks much.
You're looking, I tell you, I have no. They're talking about my teeth. I was. Cute. I also chose to like media. No, everyone's on those, but there's a.
Well, I'm just moving towards my.
Oh, yeah. Cause we had it, he had it on that chair.
Yeah, that's all I have.
It's true.
I mean.
The time is up.
I posted on my. But, Mr. Trent will say that you can see.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Cause I posted that last week, so you're supposed to get more stuff. He did twenty-five dollars.
Oh yeah, I see. That was my buddy. My screen is being observed.
Thank you.
It's a compromise, yeah.
And I'm just gonna kiss.
I don't know, it's just like. I'm gonna put it on. A moderate.
I know, yeah, and I'm over.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's fine. Uh, yes. Oh, yes.
You probably came.
Originally released. Never know. Yeah, no. Don't want that going on. That answers next question. Uh. I keep like you.
Always TV.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. We can always. Yes. You know, I'm very. I just got a. Very. Are you sure?
See, where did that come from?
Just. Did they say they do it? Yeah. Oh, yeah. I doubt. Oh, no.
Was that right, sorry?
Welcome everyone to the Sauk Rapids Rising County School District. Number forty-seven, regularly regular semi-monthly meeting Monday through twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Six P M, at the light. Saving this time. Approximately seven P M, we will pause more regular business to receive public info, if you're interested in support, please sign up. Now. There's some upfront. If however you are interested in a discussion with the district, you may want to sign up for a regular scheduled listening session. Um, with the assistance of the bar Chris Young. As a reminder, if you are in the gallery, please wait to be recognized by the board chair prior to addressing the point of education. Madam Clerk, could we establish a formal? Great, please rise to the pleasure, please.
My pleasure to the citizens of the flag of the United States of America, and as you are in other glorious hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Board members, we have been presented with an agenda, so we're going to make work to ensure any changes to the agenda.
The Chair, there is an agenda to the agenda for the following item, which will need to be added. Uh, it's the request for approval of the paraprofessional agreement for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three skaters. Which was ratified on three twenty-four, twenty-two, after the agenda was posted, we will take this as action item sixteen.
Julia, it's six, five. Thank you, thank Tracy. Any further questions or comments, board members, on the. The. The agenda. All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
All those opposed with a nay? Any abstentions? The agenda has been approved, as commented, thank you, everyone. Moving on to the consent agenda, board members, are there any items you'd like hold for individual consideration or discussion on the consent agenda? Thank you, Gina. Thank you, Mark. Anything further? All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
All those opposed with a nay? Any abstentions? The consent agenda has been approved, thank you, everyone. Moving on to the student council reports, Braden's welcome.
So, if you haven't noticed, student council has had a busy week this past week. We had our survivor week all last week, or I think it offed our black light there. And then just over the weekend, we had our state conference at Tech High School. So, we're a little tired. Um, so at the city conference, there was a total of thirty-two schools and just over two hundred students in collaboration. And there we got to meet with other councils and their executive board to help collaborate with more ideas to bring back home to our council and our school. So, it was really, it's been, we enjoyed it a lot. Um, we just wanna recognize our president Addison Devum, who was awarded Officer of the Year and the Artist Scholar Scholarship, which is the. Very rare topic. I would never.
Is there another fee? There was carnival fee at home. I just won't be, I'm here with.
Yeah.
So, going on to survivor, we are giving seven thousand dollars to the artist team. And the winner of survivor week was Garrett Roman. And we had many activities, uh, interviewing, with the donations for the total.
And then coming up, we're looking forward to possibly hosting next spring week. Which is like our, it's focused on the American Jackson Society, so that's when we wore our color on. And all those other fundraisers, like, and actually have black light, we will touch, and then a senior week.
Do you have how many students attended the black light event?
The black light one? Um, probably like a hundred fifty students. Not fans, our paths, but for black light, not our most popular fans, so we're good enough.
What's a little more about the survivor competition?
So, like, do you wanna know all the scary ones?
Oh, the comments, I appreciate that.
Well, one here, the pretty nasty one, the pretty nice one.
Or the nasty one.
Oh, the nasty one, I think the nastiest one was the smoothie challenge. So, a, uh, the winning, the losing team of the Tuesday night challenge had to go to the dormies and do this smoothie challenge. So, in the smoothie challenge, you lay on the floor, which I've tested, the only, the only losing team had to lay on the floor and. One of the, one of their teammates had to pour hot, uh, smoothie ingredients all over them, or into the blender, where they had to drink whatever's in the blender. And the ingredients we had was clam juice, orange, chocolate syrup, ice cream, grape yogurt, and more. Chinchy was one, yeah, it was so yummy. So, if they didn't drink the smoothie, they had to be dishwash, dishwashing, um, punishment later in the top challenge.
I got some of our agents poured on her, and they were not allowed to change their shirt. So, that would have been fun day. It was hard to talk.
It was hard. My son really enjoyed the watch my chance. That was a good time, so.
With my daughter.
I love that. She's good sports.
Anything else from student council?
That is all we have.
Any further question, board members? Yeah, thanks for joining, I think the kids love it, the kids really love it.
Really?
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Back to mom.
Yes, that's always great news. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, we have the presentation by Liz Reinhart in the home construction. Welcome Liz Reinhart. Welcome back, Zoe Say. Welcome back.
Alright, well, thank you for being here, hey, so, uh, we started working on this kinda last fall, and. You know, with, with all of the moving pieces that is our enrollment, and not only Sauk Rapids Rice, but the rest of the school. In the state and or the country, this is a good time for us to really move in and. Thank you, Ripley.
Well, thank you very much. Chair, board, superintendent, it's my pleasure. I may have to look at this one, I suck at this. It'll be a real test. I just like to talk a little bit about, uh, the projection environment that is occurring before COVID. And to really point out that we're in a different environment than we were in five years. Uh, today we are faced with low fertility, well below replacement. And of course, that means that the number of births increasing in the United States and in Minnesota. And consensus among the model producers that the pandemic will impact the first post even more. Uh, and in two thousand twenty in the U S, we had the lowest number of births since nineteen seventy-nine. And of course, that means five to six years into the future, we have fewer kindergarten kids. So, we need, we need to put ourselves in a mindset that we aren't going to have a lot of, with entering kindergarten, especially two thousand twenty-six and beyond. Uh, Americans are moving less. Minnesotans are moving less. Uh. Since the Second World War, about twenty percent of the population changed its address over year. This past year, we're down to eight point four percent. There are a lot of reasons for that, one of which, of course, the aging of the population, because older people don't move as frequently as. But there are lots of other reasons as well. The population is aging, uh, I'm sort of bored of that topic, I predicted that already in the nineteen seventies. Uh, because we saw that the generations following the baby were smaller, but it's becoming, its effects are very real now. Uh, it affects, of course, the mix of housing, which is the biggest difference, we're seeing a lot of broken multifamily units, which do not yield many school-aged children. A smaller percentage of households will have children. Which has a, uh, what I call a, less density, higher transportation costs. Immigration from abroad has slowed, and that's been a very big factor in Minnesota's growth. And then Minnesota population is back to the pattern of many, many years that more people leave the state every year than. So, uh, we're just into another factor creating slower growth. Then let's talk about COVID. And to make it clear, we're not out of that yet, as far as it's backed on school. Or public schooling. In Minnesota, according to the Minnesota Department of Education, the two thousand twenty twenty-one enrollment, what was most noticeable. Is that we had a significant decline in the number of kindergarten students, because they were much smaller. And those children either attended no school, because going to kindergarten is not compulsory. So, so, either attended no school, they were home schooled, or they went to a private school. Uh, the other elementary grades, grades one through five, whatever had lost students to home schools or private schools. Pretty dramatic, especially up to maybe the third grade after fourth, fifth, not quite as much, but two hundred and one elementary. And in the state, uh, middle school and high school, the enrollment was less affected, now that's not true for this district. So, what about Sauk Rapids Rice? Uh, after years of year-over-year increases, you had a lower decline, which was atypical. Uh, we lost seventy-three students, and we only had an increase of eight students this year, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, so no real valves back. Uh, my estimate based on past growth is that the pandemic cost you one hundred fifty resident students in the fall of two thousand twenty. Uh, and another sixty-five to seventy in the fall of two thousand twenty. So, in other words, well over two hundred students, resident students, that we expected to be here, because they were enrolled, and then some growth that we didn't expect. So, it's really had a pretty substantial. So it's really had a pretty substantial impact here. And it's still infect, affecting, uh, twenty one, twenty two. And we will just have to see what twenty two, twenty three looks like. Uh, my estimate starts at your kindergarten was down thirty two students, approximately these, I'm always talking to you whether it is. But your twenty one, twenty two class is back to what I call the expected grade. And most of the ten residents missing, uh, I don't know, but the kindergarten came back. But grades one to five, I'm estimating you still have twenty four residents, I call them missing. Well, any both that have occurred. Middle school was in fifty residents, high school was in twenty seven. As you can see, that is spread across the spectrum. What happened to these students? Well, they moved. Non-public enrollment decreased forty five thirty students, resident students. This is pretty significant because non-public enrollment has been declining in Minnesota for about fifteen years. And, uh, it's, it had a real bounce back. Yeah, it was, it was, had to be, uh, resulted with pandemic. You had approximately forty more senior resident students for home school, but only fourteen returning. So loss there. And then open enrollment, uh, you're basically, that new quarter of students, but it looks to me like we lost almost three hundred. And that number dropped by fifty in twenty one, twenty two, but still a lot of students that, uh, that had a return. Uh, I have no idea, I'm not, uh, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't predict what's going to happen. Uh, I would assume that by high school, uh, kids will return, not before. Uh, because homeschooling for high school gets a little bit more complex. There aren't as many high school project options, so I think that, that it's bad. It's hard to know when, but what rates they'll be at. Uh, here in Minnesota, we have a very competitive educational environment. The state supports a lot of competitors to traditional public schools. This is their twenty twenty one data. You can see the column for Minnesota, these are the statewide numbers. And then I have some, uh, right this way, uh, this again is a residence. Uh, here we see fewer students in non-public, just slightly fewer as a percentage. Uh, less home schooled, uh, than statewide. But open enrollment is a very dynamic phenomenon. Not only do you have a high percentage coming in, nearly twenty percent, which many districts in Minnesota now have about twenty percent of their enrollment, not residents. It's not, you're not on the high side of that, of any. And then you had ten percent of your, uh, district resident schooling population that had been rolling out. So, uh, that's a really big factor here. Charter schools, not much. And then as a capturing, your market share about seventy nine percent, compared to statewide seventy three percent. Uh, seventy, seventy nine percent, uh, fairly typical in urban environments. And I consider this basically the urban environment. So if we look now in the last ten years, you had an enrollment increase overall of ten point four percent, uh, four hundred fifteen students. You would cap non-resident in two thousand eighteen, which then that means that was a peak year, so non-resident enrollment then increased from a thousand seventy six to seventy seventy six students. And the percentage, uh, as far as twenty one, twenty two dropped down to seventy four, so you can see it's down. Resident enrollment increased about eleven percent, eleven percent. And the district school aid population increased point four percent, which says that they simply didn't capture all the growth that should have been there. That you stay on share. And I'm just showing you here the, the enrollers. And I guess probably more interesting to do is that enrollment beat or resident enrollment beat in two thousand nineteen, twenty, and then you see the visitor. Uh, demonstrators like to, uh, look at what's going on, what's causing the change. So on the left-hand side, we see year-over-year change of the percentage, and I call your attention again, from about two thousand fifty on, you were growing, uh, seven year or more until the pandemic. So you had a pretty strong, uh, year-over-year growth. And then the two right, the most columns, natural increase decreases. The school enrollment is the same as works versus guests in the population. It compares the incoming all kindergarten class with the size of the previous grade twelve. So how many people did graduate out versus how many did have come in yet? And you can see that, uh, the numbers vary year to year, but they were basically positive. Uh, so the, the last two years here, they're just very small and then tend to go down. So you added a, over this ten-year period, a hundred and ninety kids, uh, through the natural decrease. Then you see when that migration began to basically positive, the minus seventy two, the, the, every year, but then, but then, and a hundred and sixty five added to the, uh, we call them net migration. So the combination of natural increase and net migration is the change. And it's important because this is going to shape, uh, as we go, go forward. Uh, here's president enrollment, a lot of numbers, but I want to call to your attention a couple of things. Uh, first of all, that role kindergarten role. Uh, you see the very small class of twenty forty one and two hundred and fifty one. Otherwise, you would, uh, the two seventy six to eighty three somewhere in that range. Uh, if you, uh, this is a way of looking at how we tell the net migration. Kindergarten of two thousand one and twelve at two hundred and sixty six students, the next year two seventy four, two sixty two. See the diagonal, and that's how we felt the operation. And then if you look at the two thousand twenty one, twenty two, uh, what you see pretty quickly is that you have more students in the high school grades. You're going to have some net enrollment in the high school grades than you have in the elementary and middle school. And that starts to point to the fact that you're going to move from natural increase to natural increase. Which is not happening in those elementary grades, it's not that large compared to the number of students that you were fracturing. Now, here's a, probably one of the most important features in all of this. We're looking at resident first, resident first, and a very specific meaning. It means that on the first certificate, the mother gave her address and, and county and whatever. Home residents without regard to where the child was born. So her address, she said she's a resident, Bethany County, Minnesota. Whether the child was born in North Dakota, Washington DC, doesn't matter. Just count it as resident. So if you look at what's happened, it is a, a pretty somber story here. In Minnesota, we've been following it fifteen years here, from, uh, seventy, almost seventy one thousand down to sixty six thousand. Uh, the state Minnesota Department of Health is, uh, a little slow in getting birthday out every year. Um, some states release that in, and we go through all kinds of other analysis, and Minnesota is to all the analysis. So anyway, I would anticipate that two thousand twenty is even lower than that sixty six thousand. What we see there, if you can see what has happened in Bethany County, going from five hundred to nine twenty five. And those last few years, two thousand sixteen, there was six hundred and twelve. But now five twenty eight, five, uh, fifty eight, five twenty three. Those are the first years that you're going to do the student, uh, students who are early, uh, twenty twenty. So we, we see what's shaping up. Uh, and then because we age five in, in Minnesota, age five is September first. Uh, first I reported on calendar year basis, and then I adjust them to the school year. So I call that to pool. So based on Bethany County, the numbers you see there would be the pool, then it would be available, and then percentage that you're. And I have to tell you, this is one of the most stable sets of numbers I've seen. It hangs around that forty six percent quite a bit at the time. Uh, you see in two thousand nineteen, twenty was almost fifty one percent, then you see the drop of the pandemic and the drop again. And so when I say what's expected here, I think that expected would be more than forty five, forty five percent. You've got something a little bigger than that. Which is, is why I said that, that you're still a little short of present. So if you look at this and, and one of the things we have to decide is, uh, how do we, uh, think about this in the future? So I averaged the five years prior to the pandemic because preferably we don't want to take a single year because you see the. That five-year average was forty eight point one three percent. And then I took the average of the past five years, but I omitted the pandemic. But I included the most recent year, and it's forty eight point four three, which suggested to me that somewhere in that forty eight percent, it's a pretty safe percentage. It's a hover around that, no matter how you want to slice and dice it. And what happened ten years ago, some districts you can take the, anyone years ago, that's obviously. But, but yours did increase a little bit, so we don't want to go back to that. Other than the challenges, there is very much the all normal. So what I did was I took these two percentages, they're very similar, but they do make a little bit of difference in projected kindergarten. So I, I, uh, I have two assumptions on kindergarten, forty eight point four three. And then, and then I decided that we needed to reach out a little bit here. And I took fifty point seven two, which is the highest ratio we saw in that fifteen. So how would I assess this? The low one, I think you could kind of take to the bay. The high one, a little bit more of a stretch. You've got to have more development. You have to bring in some, or people suddenly have had a bunch of kids. Longer term, Bethany County resident first decreased from zero point eight four percent to zero point seven nine percent in Minnesota. So I took the average of the past five years, that's a zero point two, and I applied that to the next several years. But here's the sad story. The Minnesota, uh, National Protective Center has been working, projecting a number of zero. So I had to adjust this, but even if you look at the original projections, you can see how unbelievably flat they are. They're just so good. And in fact, if you look at the projections all the way to two thousand fifty, it doesn't increase by forty five hundred. So it's just very, very flat. So I created a projected kindergarten pool in the old, uh, number ones for, that we saw in the pre-construction. The children were already born and then projected on. So you see, uh, twenty one, twenty two had a pool of six hundred and three kids. It drops to five twenty six in twenty two, five forty eight in twenty three, five thirty four in twenty four. And then because of those flat numbers, we have one thirty five, I've been five forty one, five forty, okay, basically. Now it's going to be those actual numbers, but it's going to be. And then I take these two percentages and I apply them to that pool, and this is what I get. So then I sum them up and I compare them to what you had in the last tick. And in the last ten years, you have two thousand six hundred forty six kids or two, which is very, very close to that world projection. It also, what it says is how much growth, how much more fertility we have to bounce back to get to. Okay, let's look at movement here. And of course, we can see here that we have an influx of students at grade seven, which I assume is a reduction of public schools, even case six. So don't have any influx. And then if you look in that, have that hole there. If you look at, that you see that, that you see, you have more kids at first grade than, you know, kindergarten, on the pandemic in this group. And you can see basically you were picking up elementary kids, uh, these, the population here had elementary kids, which is pretty good. We lose students, uh, in high school, which is, uh, fairly typical for Minnesota kindergarteners. See, look at there. And I got it summarized here, so we can, we can say, and. And then those are raw numbers. You can look at them as percentages by, and it's a, a version against population. Anything that is one point zero 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 means the same number of students for the next higher grade here. If it's greater than that, it's the percentage, pretty simple to see. And if it's less than that, it's the percentage that was lost, all the supply already. Again, I'm looking for something, uh, trying to get it, uh, not contaminated, but had pandemic year. So I looked at the past four years, beginning of pandemic year, and I, and then I tested all this, and this is. And then I did the hybrid two years prior to the pandemic year, which is a solid one. Then you could see across the way, you know, the difference of one point zero zero four versus one point zero eight, eight one. Or at six to seven, one point zero five one versus one point zero six five. So difference between five percent, six and ten percent. And then I, I hold the kindergarten, I use a whole kindergarten to show you here because, uh, uh, these schoolware projections, if you don't do all these things, it's like a black box and you can't see what's happening. So let's see what's happening here. And to see the effect of these different vibration assumptions here, and looking at it, basically not like a hundred students different. And then you see it's pretty well distributed across all the, uh, elementary and middle school. See that sometimes, you know, we get very heavily weighted that, that, uh, K five looks the same, but the difference comes somewhere else. It's like across. So I then married these assumptions here of the two kindergartens, it's liberation. Uh, and I am projecting up to two thousand thirty one, thirty two, uh, an enrollment increase. You have thirty five, forty six, whereas in enrollment, thirty six, ninety nine, and thirty nine. So one is a, uh, modest increase, the other was, yeah, not, not quite what it was in the last decade, but it's still significant. Uh, no, the key thing is that you're moving to natural decrease, that your kindergarten classes is smaller than the previous group. That's downward pressure. And I'm continuing to project net immigration, which is all the net flow supply. And then here are four, uh, projections. Uh, and I would say what this, what this arrangement tells us is that the kindergarten assumptions are having a deeper impact on these projection results, the integration. So the first two to the, the left most projections and the low kindergarten. And you can see the difference there is pretty small, the total number of ten years. Uh, the high kindergarten makes a big difference. And what I like to say to people is that you have to wrestle with these assumptions. In this case, it's on different assumptions. Guess which one you think is the best. And here I've taken the projections and. So and then I've done the university take here over here. Uh, and what this tells us very quickly is that most of the growth is greatly determined first five projection versus the second five. And that's because it is bigger school or kindergarten due to the overall growth of cutting off. And so what you see is that if you want to think of the ten years, that your high school will, yes, again, all resident enrollment, increase a hundred and nineteen to a hundred eighty percent. If the first five years, it would be a hundred and one or a hundred and eight of that. So you can see how much of that increase will occur in the next five years. And then if you look at K five, for example, almost all of it, it's occurring in the first five years and not very much in the next five years. So that's, that's that. Now, what makes these projections too high, too low? Well, always on that kindergarten too high. Um, and the projected net migration is too high. As I said before, I think low kindergarten projecting is, is, is very same. It would take something pretty good to have. Too low, well, the projected kindergarten is too low. Uh, if more students, resident students who were lost during the pandemic return pretty quickly, a year or so, that has a effect. Or if you have more rapid residential growth, yeah, development. Now, non-resident enrollment, uh, it's difficult to check because they're absent. So kindergarten, now to see three hundred students from five, now to see three twenty, six, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Hardly names these specifications to make that long-term projection runs, blends itself and adds a one or two year assessment. But if you say to me that if you had thirty non-residents, you know, say, that you would get yourself probably somewhere with this into five hundred non-resident students probably in years here, because we're all, so you would be five, another couple hundred. Made me think that a lot. And then just on this one, this is because I looked at the three kindergarten classes, the two residents, your non-residents, and home. And I'll get the phone to this to get to you. Exactly. So well aware. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
For members, any questions for Ms. Ryan Hardes on the call right here? It's a lot of data. A lot of data. I've got one question, I'll pick it up here. Back early in the slide, there's a Minnesota population back to a pattern of net outnumbering. Did you see it? So back to a pattern, so to me, that seems like.
Well, let me give you a little history of Minnesota.
Okay.
Uh, this state was settled somewhere by eighteen ninety. Okay. After that period of time, Minnesota grew only because of this excess of personal deaths. We exported more people year after year after year than it did. What changed is about nineteen, the setup. We started student immigration from abroad. We got turn the tables for about ten to fifteen years. And in, I guess I would say that in general, when first were high, you know, when families averaged four or five kids. So you didn't notice it. Now they'll notice it because what it really needs is some growth. The other thing, Andrew, we mentioned about Minnesota's population in the sixties and seventies is that we benefited as the cul-de-sac of our shared population as farms consolidated a lot. I remember when I first moved to Minnesota in nineteen seventy-four, you could go around and rule and ask people, how many of you are from North Dakota? And there's, you know, substantial show of hand. North Dakota doesn't have any population to be. So we are now dependent on the movement in places like Chicago. We have an exchange here in Chicago that's about even. Denver somewhat, but by and large, there's something to be.
And then the, the national birth rate for replenishment rate is state-wide.
Two point one. At the end of child bearing in Minnesota, we're now one point seven three. The national rate is one point six three. Just so.
So we're still higher than national average, but we're not in the question range.
We're higher than national average largely because of African here.
Yeah, that's almost three, isn't it?
So for what you're understanding rhythm is it's probably one point five. Now, to put that in person, of all the industrialized countries in the world, we still have highs here. And China's about one point two. It said that China's overall, almost everyone is relatively rich, and that in about two thousand thirty-five, China will have the same percentage of population over sixty. Why does this seem to matter? Well, on the size of the labor force.
That's right.
Maybe it's the facts. So that's, that's kind of the. Uh, I'm, I think we have a very, very hard time getting fertility back to the place. Because there's just so many pressures that should get down.
Thank you. For members, any further questions for Ms. Ryan Hardes on the projection of enrollment?
Great presentation, Andrew. Thank you.
Yeah, I love the data, absolutely love the data.
Derek, Hazel, you had said that ten percent open enrollment out, lower ten percent of open enrollment. And how, and you, you give reference to open enrollment in your, about where the rest of the state is. How do we, how we compare with that outnumbering ten point?
Depends, a little higher than maybe average.
And is it, I, I can imagine that any city that's close by to other.
Uh, well, I.
There's, there's a higher percentage when there's one enrollment year closer together.
Yeah, open enrollment, rationalized. Well, now, think about how a school, how does school industry boundaries come into being? Landowners decided, it was probably on the basis of taxes or promotes, where, where to patch their farmland, is what we're talking about. And that land is now in basic development, and districts have some very odd shapes.
Or northern border area, yeah, we are.
Yeah, so. I can also tell you that, that out enrollment out is higher in districts than the area that's angular, than those that are more square around. Uh, there's all kinds of. You know, I, I was around when open enrollment started, then they done the coverage, because a lot of these ideas, kids, a lot of interesting creative ideas in kind of this town. Um, and everybody was afraid that it would be athlete someone doing. Not so much with this. It seems to have a lot of personalities that's owed. If I take, if I open enrollment, this district died, my mother, my sister, my cousin is there to provide before and after food, care. Um, it's, it's the town where we did most of our shopping, that sort of thing. Um, people focus, great deal, and program. Program, in my experience, doesn't mean as much difference.
In program, you were referring to program offerings?
Yes. Is there, there's just so many personal reasons that go into.
Well, I'm sure we could easily take you, um, question you all night long on this because there's so much here. Any further questions for Ms. Ryan Hardes? On the enrollment projections.
Just the Raisel, when you use wrong.
But Rice as a city is also developing, single family, so that's.
I didn't talk at a great deal about housing, but if you have single family detached, it is the highest proportion. Then if you have duplexes or side by side, that.
That's next.
Apartments, condos, anything that has an interior exit entrance.
Okay, that's the bottom of the list.
Takes a lot, a lot of.
For members, Superintendent Berstrom, further questions for this item? Thank you so much for all the work. All right. You okay over there?
Yeah.
Let them wash all over you. Roundy. Roundy.
This got a.
Uh, approximately. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to number eight, which is the superintendent's report, Superintendent Berstrom.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, communities of South Rapids and Rice, and I will read it just in at the same time, and I'll lock and chew it all at the same time. Yes, I. So first item that I would like to visit, uh, to hear with you, is that for the last year plus, you were talking about free meals that the federal government has been providing, and you talked about June of two thousand twenty-two, which is fast approaching. The program end date was actually June twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two. What we have learned is that for summer programming for us, that while it is June, June twenty-second, it will end for us in the district on June second. So it is, it was never intended to go into summer schooling, because summer schools run a little bit later in the year. So we have learned that we will not begin at this point, we're not beginning summer schooling like we did last year. We are looking at some options to try and provide that. I was wanting to let the board know that, that June twenty-second date is, actually ends when the school year ends, and it's the maximum that goes to June twenty-second. Okay, uh, there is some conversation happening at the state legislature in regards to the state funding it for the state of Minnesota, and it's about two hundred million dollars a year is what it would take to support that. So there's, I'm not sure much traction is going to be.
So Brad, is that each individual school district, everybody different time?
It, it's a.
Or is everybody done in June?
No, for, the federal program ends June twenty-second, and, but if, if your school year is done prior to that, you're done then. So we were optimistic that we were going to get some summer school funding for food program, or at least part of our summer school, and that is not going to happen. Uh, next, I have congratulations to girls, basketball head coach John Ress and his team. Uh, they won the CLC sportsmanship award for this past season. Uh, we also heard some of the accomplishments with some of our students, student council, et cetera, which is always great. Uh, back to the basketball piece, Grace, Ress was selected all conference, and Myron, Ragville, and Courtney also were on the mention. So congratulations to John Ress and his team for the, uh, the sportsmanship award winner for the Central Lakes Conference, and then to the players for the Better Town Awards as well. Uh, as we continue to work our way through the school year, we are finding opportunities for our staff and students to learn outside of the walls of their building, public field trips, we call them other types of opportunities, which haven't been around a lot the last couple of years. Uh, deportage is happening for the first time since two thousand nineteen. Uh, just a reminder for everyone that as we exercise these opportunities, uh, the rules of monopoly with COVID may vary depending upon where you are going, and they may not be the same as what we have. And so when we are guests and we are going someplace, we need to make sure that we are following those expectations when it comes to things such as face coverings. We, we know that fast, we will certainly apply them like what we're doing for deportage. But just a gentle reminder that some gent's rules are a little bit different in other places, but we love that opportunity for our kids to create those learning experiences outside the walls of a building. And then the final item that I have for you is we started the process well in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four calendar, we started first meeting last week, and staff have worked through how sharing proposed schedule, uh, for three twenty-four. And we hope then that in January, as we move forward each year, we will develop a calendar two years out, so that staff can plan accordingly, and hope to bring the calendar to the board for who, either at the end of April or that person who needs to. Uh, that is my report. Uh, any questions?
For members, any questions for Superintendent Berstrom? All right. Moving on. Next on the list is, I've never done, which is the budget review.
I decided since some of the numbers got really small that I'd give you paper. There's a lot of info on that you still. But it is also loaded in your draft, so if you prefer to follow along that way, you're a lot more than. All right. So thank you, everybody. Uh, I might just take a few minutes to talk about the FY twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So this is for next full year. Uh, we're going to talk about kind of the timeline that we went through, preliminary budgets and assumptions, um, procheck, projections, we're showing you some fun balance graphs, by the summary, and we'll work through what our next steps are, questions. And tap on that, we're going to have another conversation. I will pause after I'm done with the budget stuff for questions, and then another presentation on, um, the non-resident. All right, so this is a picture of our timeline, and it looks like it's nine on one page, but if you notice, when you get to the bottom of this page, we're only at the end of February. So we started this process really in January. Um, one of the big things that, for me, that works well for my team, me and my team, is really to have a revised budget presented prior to working on next year's budget. So that was what we brought to you in January, was really that, that first look at that revised budget. And then from there, we started really working on, on what next. And then from there, we started really working on on what next year's budget would look like. We worked as a team to really develop those initial assumptions that I'll talk about in a little bit on another slide. We worked as a team to really come up with what are those, what do those assumptions look, look like? What do we think our kindergarten class for next year is going to look like? Do we think we're going to get any of those, some of those kiddos that we were able to talk about that are now in uh, non-public schools or either homeschools? Do we think any of those are going to come back? So those are really some of the first conversations we had is really to think about what does that enrollment look like? And then it was really sitting down with all the key leadership, our, what we call our core team. And 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 providing them with information like here is what we project your staff in list is going to be for next year. Here's what we think your supply budget needs to be for next year. And then having them review that information to tell us, do we have things in the wrong place? Do we need to move things around? Does this look accurate for your building? Then it, then we, you know, really pulled in the kind of the finance committee to start talking about, okay, here's what our initial, our initial projections really look like. Let's think about how are we going to deal with them? So that's where we get into really the second phase of this, which those, we went to the board with a recommendation to say, here's what we think our, our budget's going to look like. Now, what are we going to do about it? Since then have been really working through, how do we get that budget more in line with where we need to be? Um, and again, we've got the finance committee, we pulled in the core team to really talk about what that's going to look like. It's been a great process and I want to thank all of the team to, to help us with this work. Because this is not easy to go through and it's not easy to put this together. And it's really great to have other people with another set of eyes on the process. And here we are. So this, uh, this is kind of the end of the road for this. Not saying the end of the road for the work that needs to be done, because there's going to be some work that happens after this. But this is the end of the road or the last presentation where the board will approve that budget. And then we can carry on and move forward. So let's talk about our budget assumptions. So there are several of them that we worked through. The first one really assumes that, that we have a revision. We approve or the board approves a revision to the non-resident enrollment cap. That's one of the budget or one of the agenda items that are, that's on your agenda for this evening. But this budget is really based on assuming we would get, get the initial 50 APM from revising. Pupil estimates for next year is 4,238 students. We're projecting that kindergarten number to be 315. Now you stop our casual presentation that we're right around the 270, 280-ish area for our kindergarten class. So this, this assumes that we have some non-resident enrollment in that kindergarten class. General education increase, uh, aid increase 2% over FY 22. The per pupil, per pupil funding amount is $6,863 per student. One of the things to keep in mind here, even though we had, you know, we've seen in general at aid increase, because our enrollment is declining, that aid increase is, is pretty much wiped out. We've got ourselves declining enrollment that procedure. That's development funds, we've set that aside at 2%. That's the uh, really the restricted amount that we're required to set aside unless, unless there's actions that are taken to do less than that. So that's 636,000. Salary benefits for most contracts have been settled and are factored into the calculation. There's a few that we haven't settled at this point. Some um, non-represented staff and also our food service staff. So those were, uh, we used an average settlement factor and applied those to those contracts. We don't have savings in the system, so staff that are retired, um, staff that are going to retire. And if that position is staying within the budget, we're not calculating any savings there just to allow us the freedom to hire whoever is the best fit for that. Tar rates are staying the same, TRA will increase from 8.34 to 8.55 for FY 23. And then the last year of that increase is actually FY 24. As far as we know right now, um, that is stable at this point. Will be exercising our option to extend our contract with voice. We had a two, we had a two and two essentially contract with that, so we are planning to extend that option. And that, those increases that are, have been laid out in the contract are all used in our assumption. And then we have issued an RFP for our food service management company. We are on our last year of our contract with Chartwell. We assume to take an inflationary increase for that from other. So uh, some reality that we're living in, and this is a look at where we were prior to our adjustment. So our resident growth is flat and declining, our non-resident enrollment is leading to an enrollment decline. We'll probably say this over and over, we heard it again from Angel, but this is the reality of what we're facing. Increases in district costs continue to outpace farming from the state. The district expects at least two more years of deficit spending in the general fund. So 19, 20, the deficit's been 3.2 million, now some of that was planned. We spent some dollars out of the, out of the unassigned fund balance for the safe and secure entrance project. So that was planned. 2020 and 21, we took out 2.1. 21, 22 was 2.9. And if you remember that we initially had projected that at 1.6. Couple of factors that came into play to bring that number up. Contract type settlements came in higher than the 3% we have had in our budget assumption. And also our rent, our enrollment was not what we were expecting. We were expecting to get some more of those kiddos that left, uh, that left during the pandemic to come back in. And then our 22, 23 original projection was at 5.293 million. Final budget decisions will be made by management, i.e. the board. We will look to increase revenue as well as decrease expenses. And a budget adjustment is necessary in order for us to remain financially stable. So what we did is we took a three-pronged approach to tackle our budget deficit. We focused on some budget adjustments. We were utilizing some dollars out of the assigned fund balance. And then we're in case of additional revenues. This is a kind of a summary of really what that adjustments are looking like. So as you can see, the top number is up 5.293, it's our original deficit. That enrollment cap revision, so that's the additional 50 students that we are projecting we're bringing in. That brings us 684,000. One of the other things that we are anticipating working on is an activity fee increase that will bring in 58,000. And then as we go down, you can see the various different areas where we worked through kind of an adjustment process. So we listed those out and I'll go into a little more detail on, on those as I get through the process. So when we're all said and done, our total adjustments on the expenditure side were 1.9 million. And our deficit after those adjustments are done is 2.6, almost 2.65, essentially. I'll round up. So on the revenue side, um, so this is adjusted for non-resident enrollment. And there's factors that are allowing us to really look at this and think about this a little bit differently. Obviously with the new PD building, we have really favorable bidding climate. When that, when we bid that building, which allowed us to add additional classroom space during the initial project. So that was originally planned, we had it slated out maybe 10 years out, we would add some additions to that building. Well, we had enough dollars and, and enough savings in our original um, project projections to allow us to do that now. So that adds some additional space within our, within our building. Building efficiencies, that's really something we've started utilizing to really talk about. What's an efficient level for enrollment in our building? And and we, you know, we've spent a lot of time with our, our building principals and our leaders in our building to say, what does that really look like for your building? What does that mean to you? And 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 really that building efficiency is, is a calculation of, of, of sections of class times those class size targets that were established in 2018. And that's really how we determine that building efficiency. And I, and the last bullet for that is, you know, we really kind of allow some non-resident enrollment within our bill, into our building that's still staying within our classroom target and building target. So we're also done now at 684,000. Anticipated adjustments to activity fees, so we are seeing, we haven't done anything with activity fees since 2015. And in 2015, we actually reduced our activity. That's a lot of time to have increases to cost of, of, of those offerings, cost of staff, cost of transportation, cost of supply. And to, to not have made any increase in the work of the district. But we are, um, we are proposing that we will move our high school athletic fees from 150 to 200 dollars for our activities and club at the high school from 75 to 100. Our middle school activity clubs from 40 to 80. And then we would raise that family maximum from 600 to 800. And that really is a calculation of the 200 times 4. As you look, we also lay out some additional adjustments that we made through the various different areas of our building. A couple of things I really want to point out, the operation and maintenance category. So that, um, that really is, the, the result of that is a positive. And and initially when we laid this out, it was almost like, it was almost an add to operations and maintenance. It was a pass. Because at the end of the day, there isn't a lot we can do with our operations and maintenance budget. And and as you all know, your utility bills at home are through the road. So at the end of the day, we really had to make an adjustment to our operations and maintenance to increase that budget. And one of the other things that we had to think about is public use. Now, we are increasing the square footage of that building significantly. And we need to add more staff to keep that in line with, with our other, our other facilities that are out in the same site. And then, so what we ended up doing was taking some of that add and offsetting it with some shift of some expenditures to operating capital. So we, as we reviewed kind of our budgets and really our expenditures, we were noticing that some of the things that we were purchasing out of the general fund really could go against operating capital. I.e. as an example, we've got a scrubber. A scrubber feels like an operating capital type thing. So that, those are the types of things you've shifted. Technology, uh, this is another one where we had some opportunities to really do some things strategic for the district. We have received ECF funding, which is emergency connectivity funding, which allowed us to pay for the first year of the lease of our high school refresh with federal dollars as a result of the pandemic. And at the end of the day, we just, those lease expenses are typically an annual expense, year over year. Here's what our lease expenses are. We've planned for it, it's within our scope, it's within our budget. But next year, we won't have a lease payment because we are offsetting that with some funding that we received from my brand. So what we um, decided to do was work to get our, our classroom upgrades done, our technology upgrades within our classrooms done with the dollars that became available because we don't have to make that lease payment. So you'll see us continuing to work through really that, those classroom upgrades to bring all of the all of those screens online in all of our classrooms. And it, it's really one of those things that uh, what you don't see is the cost of the projector bulbs that we have to continue to have in, in place to, to, to update or replace the bulbs in those projectors when they burn out. The cost of, you know, really the staff having to support three different types of classroom setups. So this was really a good strategic move for us and allowed, and allowed us to continue with those upgrades. That would have taken us a lot longer to get that. And then the activities, we are planning to eliminate the activities bus that runs to Rice on Mondays and Wednesdays. Right now, I believe there's only a couple of students that we typically see that ride that bus Mondays and Wednesdays. I think it was a great thing when it was put in place many years ago when our practice schedules were all done at five and everybody got to go home at the same time. Now, if you have any students in sports, you know that they're here till seven or they're here till, from five to seven. Or and it, it just becomes, it, it really becomes a not well-used word. One of the other things we are, had some adjusting that we needed to do with transportation. We are estimating a fuel or charge increase of about 71,000. As all of you know, when we fill up your gas, fill up your car with gas, it costs more than it did, which typically gets passed on to school districts for transportation. So we are anticipating an increase there. Uh, and then the other thing that's offsetting that is the elimination of the transfer bus. So we have four buses, two in the morning, two in the afternoon, that um, will take our students that live in, let's say, for example, that live in a Mississippi High School. They will take them and transfer them over speed or by school bus. And one of the things that we've determined as we have started talking about this is those students are losing 10 minutes of instructional time every single day. That amounts to about four and a half days of instructional time each year that those kiddos are losing. And and we, you can't put a price on the value of that instructional time one of these years. So this just made sense for us. So we'll be communicating with families impacted by this by the end of the week. At the end of the day, those families can choose to still, to still have their child remain in the school that they're currently attending, but they will be required to provide transportation for that. All right, so on the staffing side, so staffing levels for 22, 23 will be reduced by 21.6 FTE. Really how that boils down is we had 10.75 FTEs that were retirees from resignation. There was 5.67 FTE that were non-renewals. We have five currently vacant positions or they had a long term self-type of situation. Those are positions that we haven't filled with in the district. And then a 0.18 of a leave of absence. Important to note, of the 21.6 FTE being reduced, six, only six staff were really impacted by that non-renewal. That's for the day, that's six staff that we initially impacted. I'll leave Brad if you want to ask him. Breakdown of adjustment, so we kind of broke this between our buildings. So our elementary schools, which is, you know, this is a, an operation on Rice, Mississippi High and PB. So they had instructional staff of five FTEs, special education staff of one. Specialized pairs of two FTEs, instructional pairs of 1.67. At the end of the day, they tallied up 667,000 worth of adjustments. At the secondary level, they have instructional staff of 3.93 FTEs, special education instructional staff of three FTEs, special education pairs of three FTEs, and then an instructional pair of one FTE. The secondary buildings, which would be the middle school, high school, tallied up to 750,000. So when you put it all together, this is, this is the sheet that at the end of the day, this is what I need to provide to my audit team when they show up and they ask, where's your approved budget for 22, 23? This is what I need to provide to them. So for our general fund, we're showing revenues of 53,560, 53,554,000. And expenditures of 56,000, 56,214,000, which boils down to revenues, or expenditure exceeding revenues of 2.65, I'll round up. You can see the various different categories of restricted funds that are up top. Those are specific buckets of dollars that can only be spent on typically it's defined in statute what we can. typically it's defined in statute, what we can spend those dollars on. The second page of that is our, is our other funds, our ancillary funds, really our food service funds. As you can see, our food service fund has a little bit of an increase that we're projecting just because with us being out for bid for a food service management company, I'd like to err on the side of caution on that one. We do have a fund balance there that can carry us through that, and we have some time to do that. The community service fund, now let's say the community service fund, there's various different buckets. You have your community education, that's going to be, you know, anything from Dr. Ted to the Elijah 55 and all of those things that come out of our community education brochure. Summer rec, those are all those programs that we're running within the summer. Those are your T-ball, your race ball, those swimming lessons, all those good things. Early childhood and school readiness are really our programming that we run at Hillside and Rice for our early childhood kiddos. And then you also see the A B E or Adult Basic Education Program. So all of that is really enrolled in that community service fund. And you can see that some of them, like our community education, that is doing well. They are projecting revenues exceeding expenditures, summer rec as well. Now, that remains to be seen depending on the labor force of this bar. And we are kind of at the mercy of who we can get to work for us. And as we review that and we have our time getting kiddos, we might have to make some adjustments to be there. Early childhood family ed is pretty much a little bit of a net increase of $40,000. And then our school readiness program is showing a decrease of $142,000. Adult basic ed is also showing a decrease of $26,000. And that, that program is really, we're monitoring that program. There's been a lot of changes in how that programming is being offered in our neighboring districts. And we're just, we're just really kind of trying to see how that plays out when we're all said and done and kind of do the pandemic. Our building construction fund, we are assuming we will be mostly done with Pleasant View by the time this fiscal year is done. So there'll be some hangover, some retainerage that we still have to pay out. So you can see that that program is really working for that particular fund. Then our debt service fund, that is the fund where we make our payments for our essentially mortgages, I will say, if you compare it to your, to your home budget. So that's where we see the payments for the high school building and Pleasant View now building. And that really is an in and out. The revenue is based on your debt service payments you require to make plus 5%. This is a picture of our fund balance history, going back to 2013 or 10 years. You can see that in 2019, that was our high point for our fund balance. And this is all of the general funds. So all of the various restricted funds, assigned funds, and all the different categories that you see in the general fund. The green, the large green bracket that's in the, kind of the middle here, that is our unassigned fund balance. So that is the dollars we can use that really don't have restrictions on them for this. The orange here in our, in our operating capital, that is, that is really set aside for things like scrubbers and things like roofs and things like rubber replacements and, and all of those things that you need to do to maintain your building. This is a comparison. So the chart on the left is our pre-adjustment fund balance. Look, you can see that that was, it was a pretty significant drop when you factor in a $5 million decrease to the general fund. The chart on the right is that post-adjustment amount. So in summary, our original projected deficit was $5.293 million. We're assuming resident, additional resident, additional non-resident enrollments of 50 students which will bring in 684,000. An anticipated adjustment to activity fees. And then our budget adjustments that were worked through bring us to a total deficit remaining of $2.35 million. All right, our next steps are really Q and A sessions that we call our Traveling Road Show. Holly and Brad and I will be out in buildings and really talking through this presentation and answering questions for staff. What questions do you have for me? Or Brad and Holly, is there anything you want to ask? Holly?
All right, board members, questions for?
I have a question about the community service fund. Does it normally operate in a deficit or does it fund itself at any time? It usually funds itself. There's been years in the past where we've, we've provided funding to the community service funds and we've transferred money from the general fund over to the community service fund. We haven't had to do that in four years, so.
I've got a couple trees here. So when it comes to the activity fee increase, I noticed there's a $58,000 revenue generation from that. When it comes to free and reduced families that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, are their fees also going up or is there still a discount that's applied?
There's still a discount that's applied.
There's still a discount.
Yeah.
Right, and that includes up to the family maximum discount.
Yeah.
And you made a mention of lease payment dollars. There was a grant from the federal government. That $600 and some $1,000 was that grant restricted to technology spending explicitly?
Yes, yes. You could only spend those dollars on technology.
And it was like $630, okay.
Yeah, and it was enough to cover, we had to restructure kind of our lease payments to make it work, but we were able to get that covered. $400 is in the bank. So we were able to replace all of the laptops that.
Great. Last question, the fund balance history chart, you said the solid green is the unassigned? So that's the unrestricted unassigned?
Yes, yeah.
And that doesn't go just above $15 million because there's another bar below that? Oh, it's committed for severance, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's under $15 million?
Yes.
And on that, the board resolution was 15%. That just might prove, do you know what approximately that number is?
So if, if this comes to fruition and this is where we end up, we would order me at 24%. That 15% will bring us right about the, probably $10, eight, nine to $10 million range on that.
Board members, any further questions?
Chair, I have a question. On summer retention, meaning that there is a deficit there, do we need to charge the most rates increase as well? Can our programs act for that?
Could potentially. That one, we're really watching because it's kind of based on, last summer was a minimal summer. So we're kind of waiting to see what this summer looks like and how the enrollment works on that. But we have historically, that is a partnership that we have with the city. So we, we have a portion of that that we give dollars to the city. Or the city provides us funding for actually staffing, the waiting pool, staffing some of those facilities that are city-owned. And that, that's one of those things that we just kind of monitor and review over here to see how that's working. Historically, we have, that is one of the other pieces that we've transferred money from the general fund to cover. So I think at some point, we might get there again where we need to. But there is dollars available now.
Other questions for?
Their presentation, thank you. I know it's not a convenient process for anybody to vote for. I'll listen to her.
All right, before we move on, we're past seven o'clock. So at this time, we will pause from our business meetings, we'll probably get quick. Board is interested in hearing what is undermining, we'll listen again if you're interested in any discussion before we suggest you sit down for a session. Back to the board, Christine. The board of education will have up to 20 minutes per topic. The maximum public input session will be six minutes. I was told we didn't have anybody sign up. All right, I think we can move on.
Right. So I'd like to, just moving right on. So we've had lots of discussions internally with finance committee, with stakeholders, really with our admin team on what, what can we do to help with our budget deficit problem? So one of the things we started discussing is, can we, because we have some additional space, can we think about allowing some non-resident students that can work with them? So one of the things that really is driving this, and I talked about it a little bit in the budget, but really is that, is the additional space that we have available at Pleasant View. We have up to seven sections, correct, of kindergarten? And then six sections of the rest of grades through five. So that's quite a bit different than what they're seeing at Pleasant View today. Plus, we have extra cafeteria space that we were able to put in. And for those of you that have seen that building, it's quite a huge difference from what they're looking at now. So the district capped non-resident enrollment in 2018. One of the things we often hear is we have closed enrollments. We don't, we have capped enrollments. Since we capped that enrollment in 2018, our enrollment has defined 319 students. And as you can probably decipher from Hazel's presentation, we're not going to see a lot of those coming back into our system over the next few years. Our kindergarten enrollment in the last two years has been significantly lower than previous years' kindergarten enrollment. And then our resident enrollment is not growing at a pace of things we would think from capping those non-resident enrollment. Here's a picture of our enrollment history. So you can see, and this is, this also ties back to the fund balance. So when you think about really what that fund balance chart looked like, you, you can tie it directly really to this enrollment picture as well. So in 1718 was actually our high year with 4,528 students. And we went down slightly in 1819. And then we've had a downward trend since we put those enrolled and capped them. Just keep in mind that 2120, 2122 and 2223 numbers are really estimates just because we don't have final year end report of numbers on them yet. So definitions, I think it's important for us to really have an understanding of what this means. So open enrollment, you've often heard Brad call it really unbridled open enrollment, meaning we don't turn anybody away. The doors are open, you can come here if you want to come here. Closed enrollment, there's a statutory guideline that has to be followed. You have to allow 1% within your building as, as open enrollment, but that can easily be solved by allowing staff members to bring their student in. So that's the definition of closed enrollment. And then there's capped enrollment, and that is what we are living in. And capped enrollment really can establish, you can establish that capped enrollment, you have lots of people who have to do that, you can establish it by building. Say, here's how many students and allowing a building. You can establish it by grade levels, which is what we did. You can establish it by available space in your secondary and high school building. So there's lots of flexibility really with that, with what we would call capped enrollment. So since 2018, our capped enrollment has been kindergarten at 300, 1 through 5 at 320, and then 6 through 12 at 340. Now, if you remember, you probably saw some numbers that had our kindergarten class sitting at 314, 315. The reason that happened is really, we are still allowing siblings through our system. So if there's, if there is an older sibling in one of the higher grades and the kindergarten is coming in, have an open enrollment kid or non-resident enrollment kid, that kid is allowing in the system, we don't want to break up that. We're still allowing parents that are working in our system to bring those kiddos in. So that's how we ended up, end up getting kind of over those numbers. We are currently above caps in most of our grades with the exception of our current first grade cap. And again, we have additional space available for us. So we would recommend to board that we increase our caps for, to 340 for grades 8 through 5, and then 365 for grade 6 through 12. What we really did was worked backwards when we figured out this equation. So one of the things that our, we heard from our community loud and clear was it was really important for us to not come back and say, "Oh, we let all these kids in at the elementary because we have space. Now we need additional space in our middle school and at our school." So it was really important for us to make sure that whatever those numbers were that we determined, we would be able to support that cohort as it went all the way through our system. So that was one of the first things we did. Okay, at the high school level, what is our, what is what we call our building efficiency? At our middle school level, what is what we would call our, our building efficiency? And then we said, "From there, let's see what those class sizes would look like at our elementary level." So that was what, that is what we ended up with. So if we were to allow 340 students at our elementary levels, we would have plenty of space within our secondary, our middle school and secondary to allow those kiddos to go. We are recommending that we would have a limited non-resident enrollment period from April 1st to April 30th. The reason we would have that window is to allow us to determine where those kiddos are going to go, what those staffing levels need to look like. And then what, and who's, and, and one of the things we would say with that non-resident enrollment is, at the end of the day, we get to pick the building. So you can ask as a parent, say, "I want to bring my kid to the brand new P V". Well, if we don't have room at fourth grade at P V where this kiddo would go, we would call back the family and say, "Okay, we don't have room at your building. A choice, you can go to Mississippi High or you can go to Rex, they have room there." So this really allows us to manage those class, the class levels and class sizes that we have within our building. Also with us having it at 340, that really allows us to, allows room for resident growth. So this would allow us to still have capacity within our buildings for when those resident students come in. Non-resident enrollment will be on a first-come, first-served basis. So throw one open, a couple of those at the door, those are our people that are coming in. Non-resident students may utilize bus stops within our district boundaries, but we are not providing transportation. But at the end of the day, it's up to the noise to get those kids to a bus stop close to where they would come across the boundaries or to transfer them as well. This is a picture of what we've deemed as our building efficiencies. This is just established really with our class-sized targets that we've established in 2018. So we, this was how we went, worked backwards to say, what can, what can we handle in our lower grades to make sure that we have room at our middle school or high school? And one of the important things to remember is depending on how this enrollment falls, we could end up hiring additional staff that went through the non-resident enrollment. We could allow up to 302 additional students into our system. As you recall from our budget process, we were projecting 50. So in no way, shape or form do we think or, and or want 302 extra kiddos come next fall. But this is a picture of, as we work through this process, what this could look like down the road. In summary, we've been down 319 students in the last four years. Obviously, there's some expected resident enrollment growth, but it's not going to be enough to really make up the difference between those non-resident students that are going out. We have increased capacity. And then again, we would have an out, a non-resident enrollment window that would open up April 1st, which will, will create a that will open up April 1st, which will communicate that out through our website, what that process looks like and how you apply and how you enroll. I'll be honest, we get called daily in my office about enrollment to non-residents. All right, and this is a picture of really the adjusted enrollment caps. So, you can see that dip again is not quite as steep as what we were originally projecting. So, we were projecting a little over 4,100 students. If we add the 50 students, we have 4,238 here. Any questions for me? I have a question about the transportation statement you said. So, non-residents were not going to their home, but they can find a bus stop within our district and hop on. Does the transportation, are they going to know that these extra kids may be having none? And what happens if it exceeds the bus capacity? So, they would be routed just like any other public and routed in our system. So, we would have to know that that's what the plan is for.
Any further questions, board members? Board Director Fear, Superintendent Berchstrom on enrollment caps and/or the budget review. Your brain is swollen. Okay, so there's going to be some sort of communication blitz if this was to actually be rolled out. All right. So, the questions are common, board members. All right, seeing none, then we will move on to item number 10. And before I open it up for discussion, I'm going to go ahead and introduce a resolution. It is a resolution limiting and closing open enrollment. Whereas Minnesota Statute Section 124D.03 subdivision 6 requires school board to adopt standard sections projection of open enrollment applications, which include the basket program excluding education services or class or school building, but which may not violate minimum open enrollment standards. Section Minnesota, section 124D.03 subdivision 2. Whereas Minnesota Statutes, section 124D.03 subdivision 2 states that the school board may, by a resolution, limit the enrollment of non-resident pupils in its schools or programs to a number not less than the lesser of 1% of the total enrollment at each grade level in the district or the number of district residents at that grade level enrolled in a non-resident district, according to the section. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 47, sub-graduate's rights, public schools as follows. School board hereby establishes and limits the enrollment capacity at each grade level in the district as follows. Open enrollment applications that are received from April 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2022. Enrollment in kindergarten may not exceed 340 students for the 2022, 2023 school year. For open enrollment applications that are received after April 22, enrollment in kindergarten may not exceed 300 students for the 2022, 2023 school year. For open enrollment applications that are received from April 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2022. Enrollment in grades one through five may not exceed 340 students per grade for the 2021, I'm sorry, 2022, 2023 school year. For open enrollment applications that are received after April 30th, 2022, enrollment in grades one through five grades may not exceed 340. There's a typo on this of 320. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. But the record reflects, it is 320. For open enrollment applications that are received from April 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2022. Enrollment in grades six through 12 may not exceed 365 students per grade for the 2022, 2023 school year. For open enrollment applications that are received after April 30th, 2022, enrollment in grades six through 12 may not exceed 340 students per grade. The district will permit open enrollment at each grade level until it reaches the enrollment capacity established for that grade level. If the number of applications received from April 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2022 exceeds the cap that is established for a grade level, the district will accept the applications in order in which they were received until the cap is met. The requirements to hold an impartial lottery does not apply to the applications that are received after the typical January 16 deadline. The enrollment caps that are established in this resolution exceed the limits established by law. That is the lesser of 1% of the total enrollment at each grade level in the school district or the number of student district resident students at that grade level enrolled in a non-district, non-resident district. Therefore, the district will deny any open enrollment applications that are received for grade ones that have, or that have met. District preserves the right to determine which school in the district and what enrolled students will attend. In accordance with Minnesota Statute Section 124D.03 subdivision 2B, superintendent or designated must report to the Minnesota Department of Education the number of non-resident students who are denied admission as a result of the limitations established within this resolution. The report must be submitted to the MDE by July 15 following the school year in which students were denied admission. To the extent permitted by law, this resolution does not impact the district's right to accept or reject non-resident students who seek to enroll in district pursuant to non-resident tuition agreement in Minnesota Statutes, section 124D.08. This resolution also does not impact the district's rights to reject application of non-resident students for the district for the reasons stated in section 124D.08 subdivision 1B. That is the resolution in its entirety, and it is a roll call vote. Before we have a second, any further questions, comments, discussion on the numbers? Give me a second. Let's work these out. All right, so with the roll call vote, or I call it, any further questions or comments on the new caps? All right, so this motion before the adoption of this resolution was duly signed by Jan Solars. And upon a vote being taken, the following votes. People stand. So, Morse.
Aye.
Holtzus.
Aye.
Solars.
Aye.
Kowski isn't aye. Thank you, everyone. Resolution has been passed. Moving on to number 11, which is a request for approval of the FY23 budget adjustments. Yet another opportunity to ask Director Fear questions.
Bring it on. Wait.
Any questions on the budget, the process, the numbers? Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mark. Any further questions or comments for Superintendent Berchstrom, Director Fear calling the 23 budget adjustments? Seeing all those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? All right, the budget adjustments for 23. Moving on to item number 12, consideration of resolution of non-renewing teaching contracts.
Yes, so we're looking forward to something that we are required to do every year. Most of the manuals in the resolution are what we may consider routines and what we're required by statute to do primarily for certain licenses to long-term or out-of-state placement license. We have some long-term subs under as well, and then a small number of probationary.
Any questions for Dr. Sheen here on non-resident enrollment? Okay, I will go ahead and read to the record then and introduce the following resolution in force adoption. Resolution, non-renewing teachers who hold a tier one, tier two license or who are in probationary period of employment. Whereas, the purpose of this resolution is to non-renew all teachers who are employed by the district and hold tier one. Certain teachers are employed by the district and hold a tier two license, and certain teachers who are employed by the district and hold a tier three or tier four license and are in probationary period of employment. Whereas, Minnesota Statute, section 122A.181 states that a tier one license is for a term of one year and that teachers who hold a tier one license are not covered by section 122A.40 or the teacher's collective bargaining agreement. Whereas, Minnesota Statute, section 122A.12 states that a tier two license is for a term of two years and that teachers who hold a tier two license generally are not covered by section 122A.40, except that two years worked under a tier two license must be credited for the probationary period under section 122A.40. Whereas, Minnesota Statutes, section 122A.40 subdivision 5 states that the first three consecutive years of a teacher's first teaching experience in Minnesota in a single district is deemed to be a probationary period of employment and that the probationary period in each district in which the teacher is therefore employed is one year. And whereas, Minnesota Statute, section 122A.40 subdivision 5 applies to teachers who hold a tier three or tier four license and states that any annual contract with a probationary teacher may or may not be renewed as the school board shall see fit, provided that the board gives the teacher written notice of the non-renewal before July 1st. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 47 as follows. The school board is not renewing the annual teaching contract for the following teachers who hold a tier one license, Molly J. Young. The school board is not renewing the annual teaching contract of the following teachers who hold a tier two license, Carly Anne Johnson. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section 122A.40 subdivision 5, school board is not renewing the annual teaching contract of the following teachers who are in probationary period of employment. Brooke N. Ammons. Cara L. Francisco. Jared J. Kalau. Charles V. Gruber. Melissa M. Lenny. Terry A. Mick. Tricia N. Stein. Ronald G. Stace. Jason R. Swanson. Katie A. Tamble. Bruce E. Throll. Shannon R. Dredick. Joshua T. Wright. And Yaleza Beda S. Zykovich. As a result of this resolution, the district's employment relationship with teachers warranted this resolution will terminate effective June 30th, 2022. Superintendent or designated is directed to give written notice of this action, a copy of the resolution to the teachers' warning in this resolution. Notice must be provided before July 1st, 2022. If possible, the notice should be in delivery. The notice that is given to tier three and tier four teachers must state that they may request that reasons for the non-renewal of their annual teaching contract, including a statement that appropriate supervision was furnished and a description of the nature of the extent of supervision furnished during the deployment by the board. The school board chair is directed to sign the written notices that are given to tier three and tier four teachers. I bring this to the resolution. Motion for the adoption of this resolution. I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Tracy. Any questions on item number 12, consideration of the resolution of non-renewing teaching contracts? It's a little bit different because there's been legislative changes on the 2123. This is also a roll call vote. Before I call the vote, any further questions or comments? Director Sheen here, Superintendent Berchstrom. Seeing none. Morse.
Aye.
Holtzus.
Aye.
Solars.
Aye.
Brown. Lloyd.
Aye.
O.
Aye.
Kowski isn't aye. Thank you, everyone. The resolution has been approved. Next on the list is item number 13, request for approval with custodial agreement for the 2123 school years.
Yes, so Minnesota Board on the view, we've asked their approval of the custodial contract for 2021 to 2023. Want to send my appreciation to Chris Lloydell, Nick Thor, Robin Holtzus, and Tracy Fear, who made a great team and brought this to fruition. And the custodial voted to approve the contract on the 23.
Chairman, a proposal of the custodial agreement for the 2123 school years. Is that it?
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Robert. Any further questions or comments on the custodial agreement for the 2123 school years? Seeing none. All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? Contract's been approved. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the request for the adoption of resolution supporting individuals with disabilities to act education act full funding. Director Fear.
Yes, so in your document packet is a resolution that we were asked to put together regarding our students receiving special education services. Annually, we, it's often referred to as our special education grant subsidy. In this particular letter, we are referring to the FY20 model, which was 3.4 million. So, of our students receiving special education services, $3.4 million of those expenses in FY20 were covered out of the general fund. For FY21, that number's over $4 million. So, when you think about how we are struggling with budget dollars within our district, this is one of the pieces of that puzzle. There's just, there's just a lot of expenditures related to our students receiving special education services and not the funding to back that up. So, this is really actually, I think all districts across the state are signing under this resolution, asking for additional funding for those students. Anything out of that, Superintendent Berchstrom?
Yeah, this is the federal, the resolution goes for the federal government for this. It's asking that over the course of the next 10 years that they develop a plan to provide funding, like they said they were going to, in special education law, to be provided. So, as Tracy said, we spend an awful lot of money on emergency fund, which we will gladly do to support the needs of our students because it is necessary and needed. But the federal government is not a bargaining piece with funding. And that's why we're asking this resolution, is asking you to do that.
Thank you, Jan. Second. Thank you, Mark. Further questions or comments on the resolution or idea? I will gladly sign that and send that off to the legislators and the president himself. All right, all those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? All right, the idea resolution has been passed. Moving on to the request for the adoption of the donation resolution. Director Fear.
Hi, it feels like I have a lot to discuss. So, our monthly donation list, we have over $20,000 donations that came in over the month of March. It really speaks to how our community is willing for them to step up and provide for our students. And, you know, we have anything coming in here from, you know, student needs that write a letter in to Booster Club support for our dance team, to scholarships from the Optimist Club. So, it's a wide range, and we are thankful for all of our partners that provide those options.
Mr. Chairman, a proposal of the donation resolution.
Thank you, Lisa.
Seven.
Robert. Further questions or comments on the donation resolution? All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? Resolution has been. Resolution has been passed for the donation. Moving on to item number 16, which is the secondary meeting of the adoption of proposal 515. I'm seeing people, I don't remember.
I reported last, uh, last week in the city, there's been some donations, all the 12%.
Superintendent Berchstrom or Christine, whether there are any comments or questions on policy 515?
Mr. Chairman of the board.
Board members, anything further on policy 515?
Chair, both an option, policy 515.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Tracy. Any further questions or comments, board members, on policy 515? It's the privacy of people records. All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? Policy 515 has been approved, thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number 16.5, which was the addendum, which was approved when we approved the agenda, agenda to add this on. This is the request for approval of the fair professional agreement for the 21-23 school years. Director Shane here.
All right, yes, to bring this one to you as well. Again, recognizing your non-certified team that were hard to bring this to fruition. The fair professional unit voted to approve this contract on March 24.
Okay, I believe that's why you sent addendum. It popped out of the press.
Second.
Thank you, Jan, and thank you, Robert. Any further questions or comments on the fair professional agreement for the 21-23 school years? All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? It has been approved, thank you, everyone. Moving on to the last item before adjournment, which is the learning model review. Director Shane here, Superintendent Berchstrom.
Mr. Chairman of the board, our district dashboard with our safe learning plan is continuing to see low numbers exactly where we want them to be. I want to point out a couple of things that has to do with our external dashboard. I think we've done as a district an incredible job of taking the data from various places, in particular Stearns and Platte County, putting it in one place for people to be able to see that. What we have heard in the last week is that Stearns County is no longer going to be reporting COVID data. And Benton County a few weeks ago went to once a week, and now they're even thinking about doing away with reporting that information stuff. And part of the reason is, is that the numbers may not be a true reflection because there's much more access to home testing, and not everybody is reporting when they are positive. So at the end of the day, we may begin to see some changes in terms of what that external dashboard looks like. And it may just be a reflection of where we are at internally with our, with our numbers. And then hopefully you don't have to revisit this again, but if we do and the numbers start being posted again, we will bring that back. But at this point, look for that dashboard to begin to change its look, especially with Stearns County and not reporting that county. Once we maybe move away from that, okay? So, and the other piece with that is, is that our SIM team, we meet every week, our COVID incident management team, we are now moving to every week. Because it was a wash, rinse, repeat, which we liked in this case. Numbers low, staff, people staff. And then the final piece with this is, back in about October of '20, we started doing a report out, we called the, eventually with the rolling of the top three. We had a top 10 for a while, but it's the top three, right? It was the 10, there was a lot of stuff on there. And as we have continued to work our way through, the numbers falling down in terms of less COVID cases and, let's see what I think. What has happened is, is that we are going to be making an adjustment with that as well. We'll do that to every other region in terms of which we're reporting there. And we're going to look to start to report more than just COVID, which we haven't started doing yet. But these are all really good signs for us as a district, as a community, that those numbers for COVID cases continue to stay low. Any questions?
Sure, yeah. Superintendent Berchstrom, thanks for the, that update. And it's great to see that the numbers are going down. And I'm wondering if in future, future dashboard conversations that take back stations still remain a major chapter of that. That's something that has to change, and that's something that can be reported on accurately. So it might be a nice thing to keep, keep our, our eye on.
Yeah, I, I, I'll talk, we'll talk with the SIM team about seeing the issues in terms of keeping that, there are like suggestions.
Further questions or comments for Superintendent Berchstrom? I've got just a couple on the in-school testing and maybe Superintendent Berchstrom, or Jean here, or building principal. Are we doing a lot of them? Are we, you know?
Um, I would say, yeah, yes. Probably average is, I mean, certainly not even one per building per day.
Oh, right, okay.
So, yeah, so numbers are, I mean, we're, we're ready to go if, if we need to. Um, but I guess we can, we look at it as fortunately, there has not been a very high demand.
Well, and that's double wrong, right? Because it's great that you don't have the extra work for the staff, because it, I know it is. It still is from teachers, from classroom teachers, you know, down to the office of the building. But then also just not having the buildings is, obviously that's awesome as well.
I, I would suspect as the weather eventually warms up. And just so you know, I lived up north, I didn't bring this with me. It's supposed to be nice now. But I would anticipate as we get into the spring, warms up a little bit, we might see more testing, we check and see if there's allergies, those kinds of things, and confirming that students can stay. And that's the piece of surprises. While the numbers have been low, have been able to keep a number of students up. About 50% of our students are able to stay. Those that are going home are usually because of symptoms that pre-COVID probably would send them home as well. I call them the petro-bismol symptoms and high fever, et cetera, right? And so it's very comforting for our staff, as well as for our students and the families. Families don't have to come and get the student, you can keep it in school and get in touch on important instruction. So I would suspect that those numbers might pick up in terms of testing, depending upon when it eventually warms up. But at the end of the day, it is, and it gives us very accurate information as to whether we need to send students home or if we need to keep them in school.
Question, the thermal scanners at entrances, are those, they're, they're, I know they're still there. Are they still being utilized?
I'm gonna look at Cory. Yep, they're, they're working. We, we always have to keep adjusting and monitoring those sunshines on the window and starts sending up red flags when people go outside, but they are still there, they're still functioning.
And is there still the ability for staff to scan themselves as they come in with the pedestals like?
Yes.
Yeah, because they know if the district office.
Yes.
Yes, Jan.
Um, when will the public know about changing, yeah?
Well, media's in the audience. We've got a lot of, yeah, we've got a lot of teachers out there. Don't know what that laptop's doing there. I can guess what it's doing, so. Well, you can call them and say, call the district office right away. Well, no, I mean, I want to call to get them, yeah.
Because we will start, we will start the communication process with our in-district families first. Otherwise, now, we let our staff know, we let our in-district families know. But that's a big question. Because the one thing we have to remember is as we go through this process, we're looking at what's this going to mean for us in terms of those targets, class sizes. We've got families who are going to be impacted by the transfer for us, they're going to make decisions. We've got families that can still pick and choose if they like to go to a, to a school, an elementary school here in district. Sorry, I got one, right, so it says, really at the elementary level. And the final piece is then making that determination in terms of how many enrollment will happen, how many enrollment forms we get for non-resident after enrollment, and making sure that they're staying within these building efficiencies and top level and those classroom targets that were established back in 2017. So there's still, a lot of information that's about to come in yet before we can settle where it is. If people have questions, please just direct them to the district office and keep that.
And there will be a public press release. Further questions or comments on the learning model review or anything for Superintendent Berchstrom? Seen none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Lisa. All those in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed with a nay? Any extensions? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Hi.